All righty, Rita's on. All right, Pat, you made it.
You got a message from Counselor Kearney too.
I can't read it.
He said that he's on, he said, "I'm here, I'm just having trouble with my computer and I'm muting myself."
Okay. All righty, so it is nine o'clock and we are going to start, Counselor Driscoll, hi, we are going to start this budget meeting for the City Clerk's office. So, John, I'm going to give it to you to give us an overview.
Thank you, Council President. It's been difficult like everybody else in the city through the coronavirus, but we have been working through it. We have asked the state for guidance. The marriage licenses fall under the Health Department, which you can imagine the state of New York is very busy right now. We've asked them how to go forward on marriage licenses. My knowledge, nobody in the state is issuing them. The mayor has indicated he's talking to Binghamton, about how they're doing things. Unlike Syracuse, though.
Excuse me, John, hold on one second for me, please. Can everybody mute themselves until you're ready to speak, please? Thank you.
Okay. So, at the request of the mayor, I'm looking into what Binghamton's doing and checking some other clerk's offices, but so far I haven't got a response. But the difference between Binghamton and the City Clerk's office of Syracuse is they do all licensing. They do electrical, plumbing, they do everything that permits does and our licensing division does. So, I don't know if they're open or not, but so far they haven't got back to me. So, I'm waiting for a response. And I'm also waiting for the Health Department to give me some guidance on how to proceed with marriage licenses. So, right now, like the Tax Office and everybody else, we're not seeing customers. The building is closed and the only way to do marriage licenses is in person with both parties present and paperwork that needs to be submitted. So, unless that changes in short term, I don't see us picking up licenses until the mayor, until the governor, excuse me, releases the order, you know, for nonessential workers to go back to work. Everything else, we're having, we are working with the Law Department with DocuPad because there's been some issues there because of the coronavirus, because veterinarians are not open except for emergency services. So, getting the certified rabies documentation, which the state of New York requires for us to issue a license, has been very difficult. We're trying to, like I said, work with our Law Department and DocuPad to figure a way around this, if possible. So far, we have not found an answer to how we could issue a license without having vacuumed rabies, where the city wouldn't be in jeopardy and liable. So, those are the things we're working on regarding licensing. Obviously, we're still working to produce an agenda every few weeks and to participate in the study session in the council meetings and getting the legislation ready. I really want to commend my staff, Deputy City Clerk, Brian Driscoll in particular, for the hard work they've done to keep us working, moving forward. So, generally, this is a budget that just advances what we've been doing every year. There's nothing really new in here. There's no releases involved. There's no, the only thing that would be included is people's longevity, which is part of the CSEA contract. So, when people will get longevity, we'll get longevity increases. There's no 2% CSEA raises or executive raises. It's all pretty much a standard budget. So, with that overview, I'd be free to answer any questions.
Are there any questions for the clerk? All righty, I guess we're good, John. I guess we'll wait for the next meeting.
Just one question. On their personal service details for temporary services, I see a decrease from two to one. You know what I'm talking about, John, between 2020 and 2021?
I've got that too, okay, yeah.
On page 113 of the...
115 at the bottom, temporary services clerk one at 20 years.
What happened was, we had two part-time clerks that we utilized and one of them is not going to come back anymore. That's the $20,000 that we... When I first started the job as City Clerk, believe it or not, there were four licensing commissioners to do the same work we're doing today with two of them. We worked tremendously with three and then the city asked us to cut down to two. So, in order to accommodate vacations and different things, we have a part-time person who comes in and fills in in order to, you know, be able to continue to do our licensing and everything. So, before, we had two individuals that they didn't make 20 each, they comprised 20,000. Now, we're down to one individual that's been expounded.
Got you, all right. That's all I had.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else have anything?
President Hudson, I'd just like to thank the City Clerk for his diligence and his loyalty to the city and to the common council for all your hard work, especially during this crisis.
Thank you.
I echo that as well, Pat, because I know that John, Patricia, and Brian, I've had to go down there within the last couple of weeks and they're there and they're working away and we really appreciate it, thank you very much. And so, with that, I guess we'll wait for the next one at 9:15.
Thank you.
Right, it's, it's, okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
My condolences to you and to their families.
Thanks, Madam President, I appreciate it very much. It's, it makes it all the harder in this situation we got, man, it's tough.
I know.
I appreciate your condolences, thank you. Speaking of which, I thought I'd, well, yeah, I'll, actually, I'll hold that one. But this virus is coming very close to home here in this. I'm getting a lot of people I know getting infected and friends and parents dying and it's crazy. On top of my close friends that I lost from other circumstances, it's a crazy time, man, crazy time.
And so, we gotta keep our faith and keep believing and just keep lifting each other and working with each other and working for each other. Counselor Driscoll is here, Counselor Hogan is here.
I'm here, Paniagua.
All righty, Counselor Paniagua.
Rod.
All right.
Rod. Rod.
Um, well, Counselor Bay. Counselor Allen.
Yep, I'm here.
Counselor Green.
Yes.
All righty, Counselor Kearney, is he still lost out there?
Yeah, he's having some Wi-Fi difficulties.
All righty, and John, who's doing our budget? You're here, John?
Yes, I am. I'll give a quick overview, if that's okay, Madam President?
Certainly, thank you.
Okay. Again, your budget is very similar to mine. There hasn't been any significant changes. Our budgets are both driven primarily by personnel. There aren't a lot of additional costs. Upon reviewing it with the council leadership, I did add $5,000 to the 415 line because that was one of your agenda items was to hire outside counsel and wanted to add enough money to make that possible going into the new year as part of your 2020 agenda. So, there is additional money in the 415 line contracted services so that we can retain an attorney. I had talked to Counselor Bay about an RFP, which is similar to what we did at OUPRA. I'm on the OUPRA board there, Chair of the Court. We had to hire outside legal counsel and we just went through an RFP process. So, it's been an education for me and it'll help me going forward once we board an attorney for your office. So, that's a significant change from last year. This year's additional $5,000. There are no CSEA raise increases and your staff is all paid pursuant to CSEA, but there will be longevity increases for staff to work for you. Those are just, you know, in CSEA contract and they're paid pursuant to that. And I do want to take a moment, we're talking about staff and personnel, to commend both Jim and Amanda, they've done exceptional work and has done the job of two people right now at this juncture. And I think it's been great because we've kept, you know, all of our standing committee meetings, our budget hearings, everything going in the WebEx. And it's been a challenge, but they've done a terrific job and I just want to commend them for their work and the council for moving forward in this difficult time. So, if you look at your indicators on page 59, the only one that I didn't catch before I submitted was adopted ordinances. That's not going to be 950, it'll probably be closer to 750. The reason it's in the 800s is because of the land bank. Normally, we're about 500 ordinances about the land bank. And it seems like the land bank, if anything, is going to have less legislation going forward than more. So, that was an indicator I got to admit I didn't catch and that probably will be lower than what's in here. The rest of them are just generally estimates based from year to year. It's hard to tell, you know, exact numbers, but we try to use a reasonable estimate. If I point that one out about ordinances adopted, it's probably going to be closer to 750, 700. And like I said, they're really, all the other lines are to buy supplies for the offices and paper and things like that. They're very, you know, and they're all trimmed down as low as we can go in order to operate. I did add a little bit more money for travel, training, and development. So, thinking maybe the counselors might want to travel this year. So, we doubled that amount from 2,500 to 5,000. We could also use that, you know, for training of staff as well. So, it would be counselors or staff could use that money.
John, can I ask you, I'm sorry. Can I ask you, I know that we lost a staff person midway through the year. Did we lose him in 2020?
Well, yes, the person, the person's position is fully funded in the budget. So, and as you know, I've gone forward and done interviews at your request of the council leadership and narrowed it down to three candidates. And those candidates were interviewed by me and the Deputy City Clerk and we both came with a ranking and we sent them to you, one, two, and three. As a matter of fact, I talked to President Pro Tem who suggested I set up interviews. So, this Friday, there will be three interviews from the leadership to review those three candidates for that position.
Okay. Counselor Bay.
Yeah, I was going to mention, in regards to travel, I wonder if someone could look into clerk, I don't know if you can assign somebody or maybe we get somebody, maybe Jim could do it. But, and obviously, our colleagues would have to concur. But it would be interesting if there was some kind of legislative workshop somewhere that council could attend and, you know, or that maybe we can set one up locally where somebody can come here. I think it's just good information to have. I know they've done these kind of things at the state level before. I've sat in them when I worked in the Senate. But I think it could be very useful to all of us just to kind of hear approaches to legislative processes. What I'm talking about is actually legislative writing, you know, and that kind of thing. But I think that kind of, some kind of workshop, you know, even if it's just for a couple of hours, could be, I think, empowering for our colleagues on the council overall. But something to look into in a way to actually use some training dollars. And I've always talked with the clerk and I believe the president sometimes about the fact that I thought you need to have some kind of training component, especially for new councils coming in. But I think overall, it should be good for all of us to kind of sit and hear something like that. I don't know if this is time to think about it, but since we're talking about budget money, I figured it'd be a decent way to talk about how to use them.
Counselor Bay, I will have Jim and I look into what's available out there already and we'll let you know what's there. And if that's not going to work for us, we can develop our own, like you said.
Appreciate it.
Any more questions for the clerk?
I have a question. So, last year, I requested that we added a food budget and I don't see that in here at all.
Well, it's buried in there. You mean as far as the student, students are gone?
I'm talking about our food.
No, they're greedy, they want food.
I apologize, Counselor, I guess I forgot that. We could always find the money someplace, I'm sure.
Right. That's all, no real questions.
Anyone else? Okay. So, I guess we'll shut down because I think the next one is what, 10? Or is it 9:30?
The mayor, I think.
Yeah, it's, hello?
Yes.
It's 9:30, the mayor's office.
Okay.
Seven and a half minutes.
Yeah, thank you.
What'd you say, Khalid?
I said we got seven and a half minutes.
Yep, so, we'll just sit and hang tight and wait for the mayor. Thank you, John.
Thank you, Council President, thank you.
Okay, Counselor Paniagua.
I'm here.
Counselor Hogan. Counselor Kearney, I'm going to chuck you here, and Counselor Driscoll, I see you. And Counselor Rod, where you at?
Right here.
Okay. All righty, so we have one minute and I see you, Counselor Pro Tem. One minute and we, oh, nope, we're over, let's get started.
Madam President, you forgot about the freshman.
Oh, Counselor, my joke, I'm so sorry. Uh, Counselor Kearney, I hear you and how you doing, Deputy Mayor? So, who's going to give us an overview from the mayor's office?
Oh, Frank and I, oh, the, um, the schedule said 10 o'clock, so I'm sure that's why. Let me see if I can get Frank real quick.
Oh, I'm here.
Oh, you're here, okay, great.
Yep, I'm on.
All righty, so, we're going to give it to you.
Okay, so, um, uh, good morning. Last year, we used this time, a little bit of this time to talk about the budget generally and our approach to it. But let me start with the, by going through the mayor's office, just so we can deal with that first. It is, the mayor's office is divided into three areas, as you know. The Executive Department, Administrator Department, and Communications. The Executive Department is the largest of those three. The administrative is relatively easy, that is my salary alone. In the Executive Department, we've actually reduced by one position this year. The position was not abolished, but the funding for it was eliminated.
I'm sorry, Frank, let me stop you for one minute, please.
Sure.
I'm going to ask everybody again to please put your phones on mute or your devices. Thank you. I'm sorry, continue.
Oh, of course, President Hudson. So, one position was eliminated. The Special Assistant to the Mayor, which had been actually changed to an administrative officer during the course of last year. Those two positions no longer exist and will be abolished from the roster. The incumbent in those positions has moved into the Director of Intergovernmental Affairs line. So, you'll see a not insubstantial decrease in the overall funding of salaries in the Executive Department. And I'll stop there and I'm happy to answer any questions.
We have any questions for Frank?
So, I'll keep moving then. Office of the Mayor, the non-personnel lines have stayed flat. So, you'll see that with their reduction in salary on page 67, there is an overall significant reduction in the Executive Department. Administration has stayed flat with my salary. And Mr. Low, do you want to talk about the communications arena? Frank? All right.
Sorry, Frank, I was on mute and you caught me by surprise. I wasn't expecting. The communications budget, Ruthne Aangrande is on with us as well and available to address or answer any questions. It includes a small number of staff members and this modest amount of expenses for us to execute communications for city departments across the city as well as support for work out of the mayor's office.
Probably the most significant change in the communications area, I think it was pointed out last year, is that Ruthne Aangrande's salary was in Sura and we had moved that off of Sura. And that is now in the Executive Department Communications Budget.
Frank, I let you move too fast. I want to go backwards for a minute.
Sure.
I want to go back to the mayor's office on page 67. And I'm seeing on here, so there won't be any more secondary service personnel, correct?
Correct.
You zeroed that out. And then I'm looking in professional services, there's a $13,000 credit. What is that from?
That is a great question. I do not know the answer to that. Mary Vassler, if you're on the line, can you help us with that? I thought I saw Mary. Is anyone from the Budget Office able to answer President Hudson's question? So, that was in fiscal year 19, so it was a couple of years ago, but I don't know the answer, but replied to your question.
Yeah, I see Mary on the phone, she might not be able to get in. We'll get that answered for you, President.
Okay, thank you.
Certainly.
That's it for right now, for me.
Can I ask a few questions there, Frank?
Certainly.
Um, I'm sorry, being back on the council, I come from an era when there was like a mayor's office and that was sort of it, you know? So, you got, there's three different bureaus in the mayor's office. Is that the idea administration, communications, and the mayor's office, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so, and the chief of staff, I imagine, is the deputy mayor, right?
That's correct.
Okay, and so, the Office of Accountability isn't under the mayor's office or not?
The API, Counselor Hogan?
Well, I guess, is that what the acronym is?
No, the Accountability, Performance, and Innovation. It's in the Executive Office, it is not, there's a separate hearing on that budget.
There's a separate hearing? Oh, there's a separate hearing, but they report to the mayor's office, correct?
That's correct.
Oh, so they're part of the mayor's office or not? They just got a separate hearing?
They are, they are part of the mayor's, they're part of the executive budget, yes. Executive.
Well, is there any other bureau? Are there any other bureaus that fall under the executive wing?
Um, there are, uh...
I mean, they all, I mean, all the departments obviously fall under the executive wing, but...
Yep, there's API. The Office of Management and Budget is technically in the Executive Department. I believe that includes the Division, the old Division of Purchase. Personnel and Labor Relations fall under the Executive Department. And I believe IT, oh, research, research does as well, IT. And one more? I think those are the, and then we go into the department, yeah. So, those are the, those are all in the Executive Department, but not the Office of the Mayor is what the separate piece is.
So, there, so the Division of Respa, who falls, I mean, who's in charge of all those bureaus? I mean, there's got to be, is there a Division of Responsibility in the mayor's office?
There is, yep.
Directly in charge?
Deputy Mayor, do you want to talk to those?
So, we, the senior staff is comprised of the mayor, of course, myself, Frank, Corey Driscoll, Dunham, Greg Low, and Kristen Smith. Frank oversees many of the departments you just had that conversation about. I am responsible for police, fire, and NBD. Corey has parks, DPW, engineering, oh, help me, engineering, um...
Water.
Water. Greg is responsible for all communications from the city and, um, um, special projects from the mayor's office.
An intergup.
And then...
An intergup.
Yep.
Okay.
Did that quite answer your question, Counselor?
Well, yeah, I mean, if you could, maybe, I don't know, the other councils would want it, but I would like that breakdown because I'm, you know, I get sort of semi...
Oh, yeah.
I'm easily confused by the new, you know, responsibilities.
We can get you an org chart.
Yeah. Uh, what, now, you mentioned the Corporation Council is part of the senior staff too, correct?
Yeah.
But they're still a separate entity, the Department of Law, obviously, you don't...
Yeah.
I mean, they don't fall under the Office of the Mayor, correct?
Correct.
Okay, okay.
They meet with senior staff to provide counsel, but yes, they are separate.
So, I mean, so the generally, the whole budget for everything that falls under the mayor's office is around a couple million dollars or so?
Um, I would have to do the math. Let's see, I'm not sure if there's a subtotal for the Executive Department or not, Counselor. I'm paging through here.
Well, if you could get me that, that'd be great.
Absolutely.
That's all I have.
I suspect it's probably more than that.
More than 2 million?
Well, when you include all of the, all the departments and the special objects of expense, it's...
It's more than 2 million.
Yeah, it's going to be. And particularly given that IT is in there. But we'll get you that, we'll get you that summation.
Okay. I, you know, like I said, I come from an era when, you know, there was a, more, more people were spread around the departments and in the, in the mayor's office, so...
Right.
Sort of interesting, the restructuring.
Was that before the telegraph or after?
What's that, buddy?
Was that before the telegraph or after?
I thought you...
That was three years ago.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, I have a question for you, Frank, on Accountability, Performance, and Innovation on 76.
Sure, let me get to page 76. I'm struggling to get to page 76, I apologize.
It's okay. We're all at home all day.
Yeah. I know. 76, I'm here.
Okay, I'm looking at the less reimbursement from other funds on that first line under Personal Services. And then if you go under Contractual, the same thing is on the following line for the credits. I'm looking at the credits. And I know that we're identifying them from other funds, but is there a way moving forward, if you could give us a list, if you have that, of the funds that's reimbursing these accounts?
Certainly, it's, I think it's still primarily Bloomberg, but there, we will certainly get to that list.
Okay, thank you, that's all I have.
If I can ask a question. How do, how are we, or is there a way for us to qualify what we're getting for the expense? What I'm referring to specifically is the professional services. I'm looking at was approximately on average a half million dollars for professional services across the board. How do we qualify that or is there a way for us to get an idea of what we're getting for that kind of expense?
Certainly, and I think, you know, during, I think that's one of the reasons, Counselor, that the, that you've scheduled a hearing around that budget. But there are the performance indicators and a large body of work that API does on an annual basis in support of streamlining efficiencies and modernizing city processes. They've done, just as an example, they'll want to tell you during their hearing about the extensive work they've done with the Permits Office bringing permits online. So, absolutely, I think that's an important conversation and one that we can have either both during the budget hearing... important conversation and one that we can have either both during the budget hearing and, and at any other time as well.
Yeah, in all fairness, I mean, you're right. This is a discussion on the mayor's budget in the mayor's office, but Counselor Hogan started this, and so blame him for us going down the rabbit hole.
There, there, there is no blame. We tended to use this time to talk about other parts of the budget, so, you know, happy to start that conversation. But obviously, we have the principles of API to be able to speak for their body of work, but they do, we couldn't do a quarter of what we do without their, their consulting support.
I, I just want to add that I understand Counselor Hogan's question as well. There was a time when the only person in the mayor's office was a few people. The creation of bureaus makes it interesting. And, um, I don't know, maybe, maybe this proves to be a more efficient way to use the funds in, in that office, but, uh, just as, as express interest in the structure.
Yeah, the, I, I think, you know, seeing the structure is important. The intent of splitting it into two groups was actually precisely to give you the transparency, so that communications wasn't all bundled up inside the, um, the executive budget, that that was broken out, and that administration was broken out as well. So the, the idea was to give you more transparency into the dollars that were being spent.
I admit it does make it a little easier to follow when it's kind of categorized and undermined that way.
I'm glad you find it helpful.
Frank, I have a question. This is, this is Counselor Maggio.
Yes, Counselor.
So I see here from the mayor's office, there is a position, all executive assistant to the mayor. What is that?
Uh, executive assistant to the mayor is, uh, that is actually, um, Corey Driscoll, Dunham's, uh, position.
So, okay. Last year, they say it was seventy-eight thousand, seven hundred and fifty. I see this news.
Executive assistant to the mayor.
Yeah. It's, it was seventy-eight thousand last year, and this year it went up by almost eleven thousand. Am I reading that correctly?
Am I incorrect in that position? That position is, the position that went up was the, oh, you're looking at the special assistant, not the executive assistant. The special assistant to the mayor.
It is executive assistant to the mayor.
What he's looking at is the fact that the executive assistant appears to make as much as the mayor and deputy mayor. I'm trying to understand who that is.
Yeah, I'm trying to get...
So the executive assistant, so you're, Counselor, you're asking about the rate?
So I'm asking about, about the, first of all, my first question was, who, what, what is the executive assistant to the mayor? Uh, and you said that, that's Corey Driscoll, which I...
That's Corey.
Okay, okay. So, and then my next question is, last year, she made seventy-eight thousand, right? And this year it's going to eighty-nine thousand. Am I reading that correctly?
No, the, that, I don't think that, that's why I think we're looking at two different numbers. Where, uh, where...
What page are you on?
Yeah, what page, Counselor?
I am at page sixty-six.
Okay. So that's just, that, that rate is the salary range, Counselor, I think?
Okay. So, so my question is for the salary range. This year it's, it's going up, right?
Uh, there's been, no, those, those positions have not received increases.
They're flat. They're flat.
Flat.
Okay.
So just the civil service ranges for the position?
Okay. I guess what I'm trying to ask is, I understand that it's the flat rate, but there's, there's a change, there's changes from last year to this year. That, that's what I'm saying. So are we changing the range?
The salary, the salaries that we receive have not changed from last year to this year.
The range is changing?
No. That is the range for that grade, but the actual salary, what we receive as compensation, has not changed from this year, from last year to this year.
Okay. But, but, uh, Deputy Mayor, I understand, what I'm asking is, are we changing the range? I'm not talking about the sal, well, I'll talk about the salary later, but I'm asking, is the range changing? Because based on these numbers, it looks like it's changing.
No, it's not changing, Counselor. And, and, and forgive me, I'm just trying to make sure I'm looking at the same thing you're looking at.
So, so from the budget from last year, it says that the executive assistant to the mayor was ma, the range was seventy-eight thousand, five hundred and fifty, two hundred thousand. This year it's saying that it's eighty-nine thousand, two hundred and forty, two hundred and fifteen thousand. Am I reading that correctly? Is anybody seeing that?
I don't see that, Joel. I'm looking and trying to see that too, but I, I, I'm on the same page as you are.
Joel, are you saying you're looking at last year's book also?
I am also looking at last book, and that's...
Oh, yeah. None of the rest of us are looking at last year's book, so it's possible.
But, but what I'm asking, what I'm asking is, I'm comparing last year to this year, which last year it was seventy-eight. This year says it's eighty-nine. That's what I'm asking.
Counselor, when you're looking at the grade, what's the grade show for last year for executive assistant? This year it's twenty-three E. Is it the same last year?
So it's twenty, last year was twenty-two E. This year it's twenty-three E.
So it went up, right?
It does went up. It did went up.
So, so the...
I think he's asking why.
I'm asking why, exactly. That's my question.
I, I am looking for Mary to say why. I just know that I, I'm not getting paid anymore.
Yeah. It went from, if it went from twenty-two E to twenty-three E, uh, someone initiated a reclassification, those are normally, the classifications, um, normally come at our request from the county counselor, and I'm not sure why that reclassification would have taken place. But we'll find out. But there was, as the deputy mayor said, despite the, the change in the range, there was no salary increase.
Okay.
Well, we will, we will find that answer for you and forgive, uh, sorry, we weren't looking at last year, so, sorry.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right. No further questions. Thank you.
Anyone else have any more questions for Frank? Or the deputy mayor? Frank, I guess you can finish.
Thank you, Counselors.
Thank you.
I'd be forty seconds late, so let's start.
Don't be cute, Tim Rudd.
We're very punctual. It's great. I see, I'm Counselor Rudd, I'm his chair. I see Counselor Hogan, Counselor Green, Counselor Allen, Counselor Paniagua, um, the auditor, what councilor is President Hudson. Any Counselor Majoke, are you there? I think he might have left, but left his computer on. Um, anybody else I'm missing?
Morning, Counselors. This is David Clifford.
David Clifford, you want to do your, uh, intro?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, yes, um, uh, the assessment department each year prepares the assessment rule, um, which is used, uh, to, to, um, compute the property tax for the property owners for the city of Syracuse. Uh, there's a little under forty-two thousand parcels in the city of Syracuse. Uh, we're, um, we have people that go out and, and look at property. This last year, we were, we were very active. We were able to increase the, um, the taxable assessed value, um, and that has helped a little bit, um, with the, um, anticipated deficit, uh, that we're going to be having with the budget this year.
On that point, I know the, the assessed valuation in the city went up, I think, by sixty million year over year. And I know that meant a lot of people got, um, increases in their assessed value. And I know a number of people, um, they, they petition against or fight the assessment, disagree with the assessment. So I was curious, so far, how many were, like, questioned? How many were actually readjusted? And then what happens to those that, um, for instance, weren't readjusted moving forward? Do they just sue the city if they still disagree?
Uh, yeah. I mean, if, if it's a homeowner, um, they, they can go to small claims assessment review. Um, if, if it's a commercial property, they have to go to, uh, Article Seven proceeding, which is known as the tax searchary, uh, where they file with the courts. You can agree with the Board of Assessment Reviews determination. Um, this year, um, we had about, uh, two thousand, almost three thousand, uh, increases, uh, two thousand eight hundred and sixty-one, I guess. And, uh, we had seven hundred and sixty-five increases. Um, they were made by our staff. Hello? I seem to have lost the picture. Oh, that's... So, um, uh, we only had a little under three hundred grievances, as far as I know. I, I would have expected that to be much higher, um, due to the, the number of increases that were made this year. But that wasn't the case. So...
How many of them were adjusted during the Board of Assessment Review hearing, and then how many weren't of the three hundred?
I don't, I don't know the exact numbers, I can, but I can get them to you, Counselor.
Will it be a, um, major effort? Like, is there more effort expected for people who continue to disagree for your office?
I'm not sure what, what you mean. I mean...
Does the workload, like, if the three hundred people who disagreed, does the process that they go through to continue to disagree, does that create a bunch of more work for your office too? Or is that kind of like not so?
Well, we, we have to, um, attend the small claims assessment review hearings, so somebody, a representative of our office would, would appear and be part of the city of Syracuse, um, at the small claims hearing. And yes, not just us, but the law department addresses, um, lawsuits, um, made against the city for, for tax evasion.
Uh, Commissioner Clifford, just, uh, Counselor wrote if I could.
Yes.
There's this, uh, reassessment that's happened as of late, and I think, I think I heard you mention it to some degree, or maybe I thought I heard. Is this relative to the one percent increase that, uh, took place in the last budget? Or is this just a, uh, an effort to kind of see what things are, or, and, and, you know, my, my more direct question is, is was this a part of the usual process, or, or with due respect, was this an instruction that we go out and reassess, uh, in the way we have as of late?
Um, it, it, it's part of the normal process that we, we do in our department. However, I can, I can think that we were much more active, uh, last year, and we're planning on continuing that activity this year.
And so, um, is it necessarily relative to one percent increase, or was there some other determination we were attempting to make?
It, it doesn't have anything to do with the, uh, the one percent. Uh, this is, um, assessed values are determined by the market, essentially.
Right.
If the market goes up in specific areas, the assessments are supposed to go up to reflect. So that's why we've been making these changes. We've noticed that the market has, has changed in certain areas.
Right, okay. And so, uh, as an example, would any of those areas include, for example, the near west side, or the far east side, uh, or maybe, maybe the middle east side more appropriately, uh, the south side? Are those areas included in those new areas of assessment?
Yeah, but most of the changes in those areas were, were decreases.
Got you.
As you're mentioning, uh, the near west side, the south side, the near east side, um, those, those areas saw decreases rather than increases, because they were not, on average, appreciating as fast as the average of the city, so...
And, and so is it wrong for me to assume that if there's a decrease in assessed value, uh, with an increase of one percent on the tax, that those people wouldn't see much of an increase on their tax bill?
If a new individual property has a decrease in their assessed value, they would probably see a decrease in their tax.
That's what I thought. Okay.
Counselor, do you mind if I ask a question?
Go for it.
Uh, okay. Commissioner Seino, I was here where there was a lot of reporting about, um, you know, geographically, we've had trouble as a city being able to keep up with the market in certain neighborhoods where you see rapid increases in property values. And then, you know, respondingly, in the neighborhoods you're mentioning, where property values have maybe decreased, we haven't necessarily been able to update that. And I know this year's been a, you know, uh, effort from your office to try to catch up to that. So I guess I'm just curious, on a macro level, you know, how many years do you think it'll take at this pace to kind of catch up to where we feel comfortable that we're relatively, uh, in line with the market?
Well, I don't think you ever catch up to the market. Everything we do, uh, is kind of, kind of behind the curve. We're trying to catch up. Um, we, we react to what the market tells us. By the time we react, it's another year down the road. So, uh, really the only way to equitably address, um, all these, these, uh, outliers of assessments would, uh, would be to, a, a full citywide revaluation. What we're doing in the meantime is trying to, um, get to as many of these properties where we see that they're, they become, um, out of whack with the, with the, uh, the market value is becoming out of whack with the assessment.
Yeah, I mean, I guess the question is, like, right now, there's obviously a baseline where we know there's certain areas that, you know, are, need to be updated. So I guess from our perspective, knowing that and looking at a budget right now, the temptation would be to say, should we put more money in assessment to give us a chance to catch up to that? And I guess I'm kind of curious how you feel your department stands to be able to, you know, have the resources you need to make sure it's...
Well, I mean, uh, everybody had to tighten their belt this year, um, due to the, the effects of, uh, the, uh, COVID nineteen, uh, on, on sales tax and therefore on revenue for the city. Um, but we, we have a, a new deputy commissioner on board. Um, we, we feel that we can, we can address most of the, um, the issues going forward with the staff that we have. Hope that answered your question.
Thanks.
Counselor, I'd like to ask the Commissioner a few questions. Counselor?
I'm sorry, I was muted myself. Go ahead.
Okay. Commissioner, um, along the lines of what's, and, and, you know, I just want to say thank you for all the help you've given me over the years as an elected official. You, um, you always give me the straight-from-the-shoulder, uh, response to all my questions and all the guidance that you've, uh, given me. Guidance that sometimes I didn't follow, but guidance that was, uh, interesting from your perspective and certainly helped me out as, as my days as a counselor. But, uh, you were talking about... But, uh, you were talking about assessment hearings and you may, you may mentioned the small claims. That's the same thing as your Board of Assessment Reviews, right or not?
Uh, no, it, it's the next step. Um, so if, if, if you wanted to grieve your assessment, the first thing you could do is you could informally ask our department to take a look at your assessment. And one of our assessors would go out and do that during the year. If, if, if they felt that you were over assessed, they would reduce your assessment and you'd get a notice at the end of the year. Um, if, if you didn't like that determination or if nothing happened, you have the option to go to the Board of Assessment Review. That's the formal grievance process. You could go to a hearing with the Board of Review, they have the ability to lower your assessment. Then if you don't like the determination of the Board of Assessment Review, you can go to the courthouse and file a small claims assessment review. And the courts, um, they appoint a hearing officer and you have a hearing with that hearing officer and, and a representative from our office. And, and you have the opportunity there also to get a reduction. So it, it's, they give, they give you enough opportunities.
Okay, so that's a two-step process basically, if, if you wanted.
Yes.
Now, the, uh, Board of Assessment Review, that usually means what, what, in the afternoon? More or less?
In the mornings.
In the mornings, okay.
They, they meet in the mornings, usually in the month of February.
Okay. And those guys haven't got a raise in what, twenty years or so?
Yeah, something like that.
You know where this is coming from? Is that true or?
Uh, in, in, in some time, they haven't, haven't had a raise yet.
Yeah.
They couldn't tell you exactly.
I just know that we have some pretty, uh, wise folks on that review board, you know, guys who have a lot, people with a lot of experience and stuff. Maybe it'd be a good idea to kick them up a few bucks anyways for their time.
Commissioner, how does theirs, I mean, I know it's a hundred dollars a day, how does that compare to, you know, Rochester, Buffalo, Albany, so?
I, I honestly don't know at this point in time. Like, we did a study, uh, must've been five or six years ago. And, um, and they were, they were sort of in line with, with other municipalities of our size. But, um, I haven't done that study in some time.
I don't know if we need to study for anything like that, but, um.
Yeah, I mean, it, it, it's something that, that I think that the board members are interested in. Uh, they've expressed, um, a desire to have that amount increased. Uh, the, the board is appointed by the common council, not appointed by the administration. So it's really up to the council to decide.
Okay, that's something maybe we can look at. Uh, and when all this, like with the lawyer and, uh, a member of your department, small claims court, so I mean, there's quite a bit of resources are, are tied up in those reviews and also with the small claims action, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
But that's our job, so.
Yeah, I know. Well, there's some, some departments when, there's some, I won't mention any names. I, I probably should just keep quiet. There's some departments that, you know, get sooner come out of overtime paid to attend things, um, so.
We try to avoid, uh, overtime. Uh, if, if, if we have people, um, for example, the night hearings for the Board of Assessment Review, um, we, we give comp time, lieu of.
Well, God bless you. That's all I got, thanks.
Anybody else? Have any more questions? We can, um, we have 10:30 for IT.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thanks, Commissioner. Thanks, Counselor. Counselors?
This is the budget hearing for the Bureau of Information Technology. My name is Counselor Rudd, I'm the finance chair. I have Counselor Panigawa, um, Counselor Green, Counselor Bay. Counselor Carney, are you there? Counselor Allen, President Housen are potentially on, but not visible.
I'm here.
And Carney's there, he's just, he's having some, uh, d-.
And we have Dave Proak, who can walk us through. I feel like the last couple of years, I'll just figure out if Dave went first. He almost like roughed up a bit, so I, I got a brownie and, uh, I refilled my coffee cup before this one. Nice for Dave, but somebody's got to mute. There's somebody who's like shuffling and it's loud. And with that, Dave, you can walk us through, um, to the extent you want to talk about, I haven't done all the goals and accomplishments and all that stuff, but I'd like it for IT because you, you do, do projects. So walk us through your budget, but talk to us. And I, I assume you probably had to do a bunch of stuff related to helping the whole city operate remotely. So, um, I'm happy to hear like what you've been doing to help it so we're, we're actually able to have these meetings and all of that. So take it away, thank you. For you. I can't hear you. Anybody else here, Dave? Nobody can hear you, Dave?
Oh, I can't hear him.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, it's, it's, yeah.
No, yeah.
Hey, sorry about that, hang on, let me just turn this up. So much for technology. The, uh.
I was gonna say, that's what I think, guy.
That's right. Uh, the, um, first thing we did was when this was coming down the pike is, you know, the, the city has not had a workforce that has worked from home. So, uh, we, we established an account for our WebEx that makes all these meetings possible.
It's really, uh, been very interesting watching the growth of that. We're able to look at the analytics of what exactly occurs. Um, and I shared with the mayor and some department heads last week, the number of meetings we had during the most previous two-week time period. There was something like, it was five hundred and sixty-eight online meetings were held over the previous, um, two weeks, who was the period ending April sixth. Uh, it was five hundred and sixty-eight meetings. The number of attendees per meeting averaged just a little bit over five. And, um, the, the number of minutes by those five hundred and sixty-eight meetings was a little bit over seventeen thousand. What was most impressive was that the number of meeting hosts, number of people who would call a meeting and send the invitations, create the meeting, was seventy-eight. And that really indicates that the technology is spread far and wide, um, and deep. It's not just department heads running meetings, it's not just comic cultures running meetings. But in a very short amount of time, uh, cities really adopted this technology. I think it's part of the culture and it's here to stay. And, um, we're currently working on, uh, WebEx is a fiscal product. They rolled out ninety-day free licenses for everybody about a month and a half ago. I jumped on that. But given the adoption, this is a part of our culture now. So we'll be, we'll be, um, purchasing those licenses at the end of the ninety days. And this will be a part of the way we do business going forward. Um, so in terms of making some of this possible per Counselor's suggestion, uh, the WebEx, it's, it's gone really well. Um, we've had some challenges in getting people connected from home. We have a, uh, solution set that includes, uh, tablets and Apple products as well as Windows products. We have some folks that just weren't able to connect from home. They, and what we've done for those, uh, people, we've let, allowed them to bring PCs from City Hall home. We're keeping track of all this because, you know, it's one thing to roll all this out and make all this possible now, but when life returns to normal, whatever that normal is going to be like, you're going to have to unravel a little bit of this. So, um, we've, the, the team has been fantastic. Um, IT now runs the help desk from seven AM to seven PM. It's been that way for three weeks now. Um, the first two weekends into this, uh, we worked Saturday and Sunday, get people online, to get people productive. So it's really, really been, uh, a joint effort. The team, I can't say enough about them. They've really been great. They've really been great. Um, segueing into the budget conversation now, the.
Budget, just there, as you were talking, I'm not sure if it was my end or your end, but it cut in a little bit, cut out a bit. So when you said you signed up, there was a ninety-day trial for WebEx. What happens after the ninety-day trial? And you said, it seemed like you said you signed up for something, but.
We're gonna, we're gonna purchase the licenses. This, you know, this is a, this is a monitoring tool that most places have.
So how much will that be moving forward?
That's thirty-two thousand dollars a year.
Okay, and is that in the budget or did the budget happen before you did that thirty-two thousand? And then was that in the current fiscal year or?
I, I have money to pay for it in this current fiscal year and it's budgeted going forward.
So it'll be thirty-two thousand dollars a year? Okay, so it's in this budget somewhere that you have from, okay. Great, thank you. Proceed.
Um, a- additionally, we've made some other small changes. Um, the fire department folks over at Training and Maintenance at State Fair Boulevard, there's about seven or eight folks that need to connect remotely. And they're just, the mechanics of the networking, it just was not working well. Um, coming through City Hall, we stood up a new VPN, uh, for, a new firewall, allowing VPN access directly for the Training and Maintenance guys. So, uh, that went live last Thursday or Friday. And we're, since so many people are dependent on our existing VPN connection at City Hall, we, but just last night went live with a second one. So there's some redundancy. Um, it uses a second internet connection, so, you know, Spectrum had a bad day. Um, people in the Northeast would, would be largely unproductive. We have a second internet connection that is not with Spectrum and now we have a, a second VPN connection that leverages that second connection. So we've got some redundancy there. We've built up some capabilities on the fly. Um, and I'll say for the third time, the team has been really, really great about responding to all these challenges. Um, you know, nobody, no business was prepared for this new normal, uh, but we've reacted, I think, uh, really, really well. Segueing into the budget now, some of the biggest changes, and this was, this was happening prior to any COVID activity. If you look at my operating supplies and expense line, that's five four zero five hundred. That had a significant change to it. That went up versus last year's adopted. That went up by two hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars. And that was purposeful. Um, the, the budget office feels strongly, and I, and I, I do as well, that all software license costs should be consolidated on one budget. So what has happened is these aren't, probably half of them are new expenses, but half of them probably are not, but they were buried in everybody's budget before that. So it's tough to get a handle on everything. I just want to give you a couple of examples. Um, we have some new software going to codes. Uh, we have new software for LED. We have, um, additional licenses for code Don Base. We, uh, we still do some microfilming at codes. We have some new software going for the open counter software and Camino, all at codes. So that probably totals one hundred and twenty, five hundred and thirty thousand dollars. That's in the budget. Uh, Law, their subscription in Nexus, uh, Lexus Nexus and another database they use for case management, that's now in IT's budget. Um, the software cost for BAA, the hearing recording and some software for them, that's now in IT's budget. Uh, there's an engineering, um, software licenses that's in IT's budget. There's two assessment licenses, there's three parks licenses. Once again, some of these aren't new. Park has had, uh, park inspection software for a while. They had a treekeeper, which is their database of trees. That's been out there. Rec desk software, they went live with that last year, but now that's showing up under my budget. Um, working up the list here, we've got a whole bunch of software from DPW, everything from Snap-on Tools, the asphalt plant software, a Dossier software, which is the software that runs our fleet maintenance, um, server. So that's all on, on IT's budget. Then there's a group of, uh, there's a group of, uh, maintenance costs for software that the API, API uses. That's both, we're making a, a strong push in terms of getting some stuff up in, uh, Google Web Services. There's some Google Storage. There's some Amazon Web Services. There's a Creative Cloud licenses for Adobe. Uh, those are from the API. But once again, these have all been consolidated and that, if you look at my five four hundred five hundred line, we got about two hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars. It really jumps out at you, especially given this year's, uh, budget constraints has a huge increase. That was before this, that was nothing new.
So in relation to that item, um, yesterday I asked for a couple of reconciliations for other departments when there were just these kinds of changes where it goes up a lot in one department, but it's really reflective of pieces from other departments that used to, they were always there being moved around.
Yep, yep.
So somebody, either Mary or somebody in the budget office or you, if you could just like reconcile that line to say, look, here's the spending, here's the spending coming from other departments, here's what it was in the previous department, so that we can see that, um, most of it is coming from other departments and that, you know, twenty thousand dollars is an increase or whatever it may be.
Yeah, so you want to, you want to see the delta, okay.
The delta, but I want to see where it came from, like kind of what you're describing, but just together on one sheet that just says, look, here's the.
Yeah, so regardless of if it's codes or not, was it in last year's codes budget or is it brand new for codes? Okay.
Yeah, exactly, definitely.
Dave, last night we did the, uh, police department budget and I know one of their professional service lines was MA Pulsy Network Consultants for three hundred and fifty-seven thousand. Is that something that should be consolidated within IT? Do they operate independently? How does that work?
Um, the, the IT department and personnel at police, they're, they're very much standalone. We happen to use the same consultants, Pulsy, they're, they're A-plus. They're, they're great folks. We, we use them in a much different fashion and we use them probably fifteen, twenty thousand dollars a year. We do buy a bunch of products, well, the products are, go through purchase and they all on New York State contract. But we don't use them to supplement our, our services to the extent that the police does. I will say, given.
So I guess I, I didn't quite understand the substance. IT has, there's a separate IT department within the Syracuse Police?
Yeah, they're, they're, they've always been standalone. There's, I believe, six positions, um, completely standalone, different budgets, uh, different hardware, different software, different, uh, different everything.
They also have their own IT, right?
Who?
Fire?
No, no.
No?
Police is the only one. Police the only one. In fact, Fire, Fire, um, had two IT people. Um, they both left nine months ago, uh, so we've been supporting them without those positions being filled and those positions have been, um, the funding has been pulled for those. Um, so our staff has really been doing yeoman's work since last July, helping out with those two vacant positions. Uh, speaking of unfunding, so, um, you know, everybody felt the, uh, felt the knife when it came budget time this year. So we did have funding pulled for four positions this year. But there was funding provided for two new positions. The two new positions are the webmaster. The webmaster is going to help the communications team with our new Open Cities, uh, website and web platform. So we've got funding for a new position, that's for a webmaster. And also, the second position that is brand new, you heard, you heard me speak of all the new maintenance costs we have? Probably half the maintenance costs, and I'll get you that figure, Counselor, are for new, uh, new software that's coming on board. Um, and the administration and all of us feel strongly that we need a, we need some project management guidance. Um, we need to keep things on the rails, going in the right direction. So with that, the administration supported us getting a new project manager position funded and created. So both of those are due to start July first. I, I, I maybe check that on the webmaster, I believe the position's already been created that we may have an opportunity to hire somebody prior to that. I'm not, that was a couple of that, a few months ago, I'm not sure if that has changed. But certainly those two positions are fully funded and new and ready to go as of July first. And they're really, really needed, both the webmaster and that project manager. So the net of IT. So the net of IT staff wise, we lost four funding for existing positions, but two new positions got created and funded.
What are the four that are not funded?
Senior Network Administrator. Enterprise Functional Lead. Enterprise Support Specialist. And Network Administrator. The middle two, if you will, the enter, the two enterprise positions were positions that were predominantly PeopleSoft centric positions. And we're able to, because of the existing relationship we have with, with Onondah County and our IMA that we have with them, we're able to lean on the, on the county for those services. So it's not nearly the same as having two full-time people. Uh, but we're, we do okay with PeopleSoft. Uh, the county is always there whenever we need them and we pay actual cost for that. So that just seems to make a lot of sense to forego those two full-time positions. Um, the relationship with the county is strong. Uh, they've got a lot of expertise and we use that when we need it. And when we don't need it, it's ready for us, but we don't have to pay for it.
How many of those funded, those non-funded vacancies were not funded last year?
One. The two other positions that were cut, or the funding was cut for, were a Senior Network Administrator and a Network Administrator. The, um, we don't have a formal arrangement with the county for support on that yet. Um, I'm hoping that happens soon because our Network Administrator retired. We've got him back twelve or fifteen hours a week. Quite frankly, the last month or so, he's working probably double that. But, uh, an IT department can't, can't go along without Network Administrator functionality. So our choice is going to be, our choice is no longer going to be to hire for it. Our choice is either to spend, uh, spend money on a consultant or partner with the county in order to secure those, um, resources.
So why don't we delete the, the position?
So as I understand it, and I, and I, not only do I understand it, but it's the case, the, uh, creating and abolishing, creating positions is a lot of work. So you don't really, you typically don't abolish them unless you really, really are sure you're not gonna go back to them.
So what work did you have to do to make the webmaster?
You mean, there's the steps to creating the position?
Yeah, you just created a webmaster, right? That's a new position?
Well, no, 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 no. I mean, this, this is all through civil service. So i- in a perfect world, it wouldn't be like that, but you create, oh, there's these forms you, you fill out. You have to do a duty statement, send it over to the county, get it approved that, yeah, if he's gonna be a ditch digger, then, then tho- those types of duties are under this title. Um, prior or in the same timeframe as doing that, you, there's a personal requisition form you file with our administration. So I'd like to tell you at the snap of a finger, it's not.
All right, you're the, you're the, you're my one answer. I, I mean, that's my, I have to ask that question at least once every budget season. But I do think it's not smart to keep all these not funded positions on thing. I think people figure out when they want to fill a position, how to fill it, the same way you did this year. So I still think we should purge the budget, not just your department, but everywhere of all these not funded vacancies because it's just.
The, the, I, I did, I'll just say it again, you know, navigating civil service and getting the paperwork done, it's, I, it, in the, in the best of worlds, it's cumbersome. It's just, it's kind of an antiquated system. And I think if you went through it a few times, you might say, you know what? Not hurting anything to have that on there. So.
You know what it hurts? It hurts the transparency. Because when we look at this thing, we can't tell which positions are funded and which aren't. So it's hard to know what the hell's going, what's going on. It makes it cumbersome to read the budget.
Okay, oh, okay. And I, 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 I think there's probably a solution to that other than getting rid of all the unfunded positions. But I don't wanna, I don't wanna get in, uh, I don't wanna get us off track. I think there's other ways of handling that.
All right.
Fair enough.
Well, on the webmaster, is there somebody who would? How was the decision? I could see it going either in IT. It makes sense the webmaster would go in IT, but I could also see it going under, um, in the mayor's office, the, the, the communication folks. And I assume the webmaster will probably report to them a fair amount. So. I guess, how is this the best place? And then can you just give a brief update on the status of the new website?
Sure, I'll start with the website. Um, it's in contract right now. I believe we have their first, the first pass of their contract is with us right now. Um, they've been, it was interesting, they reached out to us even though we're not, you know, we don't have a formal contract. They reached out to us and we had a call with them two weeks ago. And we may lean on some of their resources. They're offering up some free services. So they're heading, so they're, they're offering up some services. There are add-ons to existing clients, no charge. And although we're a client, not officially yet, they're offering it up to us as well. And I know Ruthne is considering, um, utilizing that offer. Um, but to answer your question, they're in a, somewhere in the contract phase now. In terms of where the webmaster should go, I, I, you know, I, I think it should be in the IT. But I have no illusions about it. I'm not gonna be, um, monitoring them forty hours a week. They're gonna be downstairs working the communications team, full press on getting a new website. Thing down the road, they may branch off and be able to do some more work. I mean, Parks has a great website and Downs is a great job with that, maybe to help those folks out. But it's gonna be a full court press until we get our website up and running. In terms of who they report to or whose budget they're under, yeah, you know, that, that's not.
All right, when do you, when do you or Ann Ruthne expect the website to be operational? The new website?
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not prepared to give you a hard answer on that. Uh, Ruthne, if you're there, if you think you know when it'll be operational, you can jump in on the chat, but otherwise, I'm just not prepared to give you an answer on that.
Dave, this is Ruthne, I am here. Um, and you're correct, um, actually, contract, I just sent back, I spoke to the vendor yesterday because as you can imagine, there were a lot of, um, there are a lot of services related to in-person training, in-person workshops at the city, travel, that, uh, just needed to be reevaluated based on the, the current state of things. I still can't speak to when it'll be operational, but we have a call this evening on revising the schedule. Their team has wasted no time in, um, providing me what I need to, to keep moving the project forward. I'm still optimistic that, uh, we can get something stood up very fast and they're really willing to put all hands on deck to make that happen for us. They understand the restrictions that we currently have, um, are, are really cumbersome.
We're revising the schedule to be slower. Is that correct? That initially anticipated?
Um, no, we're looking, so tonight we'll have a conversation about possibly fast-tracking part of the schedule and slowing it down in other parts. But the important thing is to make sure that, um, we get in the initial implementation of the software first. We may have to slow it down around some of the training, around some of the deployment of resources to different, um, different content editors as we do work across the departments. Part, the format, of course, will have to change because we, we can't bring people together as easily as we could have three months ago. But we can get an initial beta site still set up pretty fast and I'm still committed to doing that.
Thanks, Ruthne.
Anybody else have questions for IT?
Counselor, I have a few.
Have at it, Counselor Hogan.
Dave, um, when you said, and I'm, you know, first of all, I want to commend you and your department for, uh, taking care of that finance depart, department flooding and being able to get city paychecks out in a timely fashion. That was a great job on your behalf, I'll tell you. Um, also, I, I, when you said you jumped on the WebEx thing, uh, the thirty-two thousand dollars and you had three months of a free license. Now, what hap, I, I, I know we are under obviously great strain as far as making city government run, but I mean, is that a situation where you just get approval and we'll eventually get a waiver of competitive bidding on that? Or, and all these licenses and everything else, does that come before the council?
Yeah, so the, um, so that, I should have been more clear. The WebEx, we're gonna use the ninety day license. We're gonna, we're gonna use that for every day we can. And when it, when it, when it needs to roll over to either pay or go home, we're gonna pay. So, but what I wanted to do is I had to ask the vendor for a quote a couple of weeks ago because I knew I needed it to account for it in future budget and this year's budget prior to that ninety days expiration. I couldn't wait till the end of June to say, hey, how much is it? And then try and figure out where am I coming up with the money? So having paid it, having cut a check, I've got the formal quote, so I know what it is. It's included in the budget, so it'll be transparent once we go live with our permanent licenses.
Yeah, I, I commend you on your, you know, action in that part, you know? I mean, that was a command decision that had to be made. I'm glad you did it. Um, yeah, so eventually, if you decide on that, there'll be some sort of waiver coming before the council.
Well, no, the, the, the price, I mean, WebEx is a product from Cisco, so we'll get, uh, pricing right from New York State, a New York State contract price.
Oh, good, okay.
So this is, this is, yeah, there's no, we're not, um, what are the waiver of all that stuff? None, none of that. And I can, I can't speak for every piece of software on that list, but it is rare, as far as I know, to, um, seek a waiver. I don't think anybody likes seeking a waiver. Sometimes it speeds things up, but, um.
So they're all on a state contract? Are they all on a state contract?
No, I didn't say that. Now, a lot of the software is unique. So if you want to buy, pick one, open counter software that, um, Jake is using over for permits, that may be sole source, okay? But there's, you, there's nothing getting around, um, county purchase. So I, I can't speak to all these things, but, um, the software we buy, everything is, is by the book. I don't think we've asked for, I may have asked for one waiver in a couple of years. For a consultant for, um, Hyperion or PeopleSoft one time. That was about it. Um, I'd be surprised if there's a lot of waivers in here. Now, they are sole source, right? So some of these things that, I'm picking on Jake, some of the things that permits is gonna be doing pretty cool. And if it was commonplace, if you had ten vendors doing it, then heck, we would have been doing it five years ago. But, but it isn't. Uh, we're pushing the envelope, so sometimes you push the envelope and you pick a winner, you pick a vendor you like. And there's no, there's nobody else that does it. Well, that's why we picked them. So if that's the case, there's, there's a kind of, oh, RFP process because they're the ones who, who created that widget, so.
Uh, this is just part of our fiduciary responsibility, asking questions like this. I mean, we're, we're, you know, I, the last thing I, as being an old, you know, being in a department where operations was a key and, you know, I, we want, we don't want to interfere with your operational nature, but we have to, you know, you have to ask questions like this. And also, I mean, has there ever been a, uh, uh, an initiative to try to like combine? It's, it seems crazy to me that the police have an IT department and the city has a parallel IT department. I mean, that doesn't make any sense to me. And I was just wondering if there's somewhere down the line is, is their talk about, you know, maybe ha- having them come under your, your age at all?
So, um, I, I concur with a lot of what you said, but this is not the time or the place. Um, I, I think.
The reason I bring it up, Dave, the reason I bring it up is because I noticed in the police budget that they don't, they are, they don't have a proposed network administrator for next year either.
Yeah, so they're, so if I had a venture, I guess, I don't know their budget at all, but I would, I would guess they're, they're supplementing services through MA Pulte for that. Uh, Counselor Green mentioned a budget amount for, um, how much their app in Pulte is in their budget. Uh, Pulte does a lot of, uh, they'll bring a, a body in one, two, three, four, five days a week. They do it all over. They do it for, uh, Rome's Police Department. I think they fully staff it. They're a really, really good firm.
So that's another separate contract.
Yeah, but we use, we use Pulte too. We use them to supplement what we do. We don't bring, we don't use, bring them in for bodies. But in the, the answer to like us not having a network guy is to combine with the county. We work with them on a lot of things now. It's, it's all taxpayer money. We're four blocks away. We know the people, we work with them. They get, they hire the same positions I do, but they pay more and you can live in the county. So in, in this environment where IT talent is tough, you know, I'm not charming enough to hire, to be able to hire good people with, with what we have to work with.
There's some pretty nice neighborhoods in, in the city, Dave.
Yeah, and, and, and I've lived in them for the last twenty-five years and I don't disagree. You don't have to convince me of that, but it's, it's convincing a scarce talent pool of that. And there's just a lot of reasons where, so I want to fix my network admin problem. We oughta, we oughta do it by combining with the county because they've got the bodies that can help that. Then, when we're on a stronger footing, that's a great time to have that conversation about police. Because having a separate police department for a city our size, separate IT department, I can tell you through New York State, that is very unique, very unique.
Counselor Hogan, can I piggyback on top of?
Sure, can I, I, President, you can keep going, but I'm gonna have to sign off for that. Meeting at eleven, so Counselor Hogan, if you want to, as a finance member, you can like run the rest of the meeting for everybody who has additional questions. Sorry to step off.
Thank you, Commander.
All right.
Okay, um, Dave, I hear what you're saying about things being proprietary. I understand that DPW has proprietary. But as Counselor Base stated yesterday, I am totally opposed to waiver items, which I hear what you said, that you've only maybe done one in a period of time. Because to me, as you know, with, with IT, it's evolving all the time. And we have some smart new young people out here that's innovative. And I don't want to see us get stuck because these are the people we've always used and we just bypass good talent and good programming. So that's why I am very opposed to waivers.
Got you. I don't, I don't disagree. Some, sometimes, sometimes it's, you gotta hold your nose and go with it, though. I've been in that position a few times. It just makes things happen quicker. Um, so sometimes you do it. I don't, I don't know anybody, from my experience in the city, who, who that's their first choice. Hey, let's ask for a waiver for this. That's, um.
No, I know that's not the case, but I know that there's a lot of times in the city, people have been so used to dealing and working with a certain, eh, uh, organization that they're reluctant to change.
I see what you're saying, yeah, I mean, all, our, our, all our professional services contracts, um, are, 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 are RFP'd. Um, both with Pulte, we have a, we have, um, a, a small local firm that does a lot of our server support and PC support. And all that is by the book.
What I was trying to say, uh, President Hudson, is that when we don't do an RFP, I just want to make sure that we always, if we just, if the department, any department wants to go for a waiver of competitive bidding, it comes before the council so we can ask questions of why they're asking for it. So, you know, I mean, I, I agree with you, uh, President Hudson, is sometimes, you know, I mean, we have to, not only, we have to protect the integrity of not only every department, but all the administrators and, and certainly the common council. And, uh, that's part of the process. So is there any, anybody else on this who wants to question, uh, Mr. Proek at all?
I just want to say, Dave, thank you so very much because during this unprecedented time, you have us all up, running, working and I'm not technic, I'm very technically challenged. So for me to be able to do this, it's amazing.
You know, and, and, and Dave, uh, not, I, I not only want to say that, but that's your staff too. Uh, you certainly have shown that the city can work under very adverse circumstances and without your, the efforts of you and your crew, uh, I don't know where we'd be, so.
Yeah, they've, the, the, the team has rallied, they've been great. They've, they've, uh, accepted the expanded hours. We have people in the morning, we have people in the evening. If we'd have to do something on a Saturday, I had six or seven people work two Saturdays ago. Um, yeah, the, the team has really come together.
Well, you're, you're a great leader and, uh, we appreciate it. Thank you very much. Does anybody else has any questions? I guess we can call this.
Yep, I'm headed to NBD, see you guys.
Okay, bye.
Bye, everybody, stay safe.
Bye, thanks, Dave.
Bye-bye.
Just to reiterate, um, the NBD Standing Committee meeting is a different, um, link, just so you know. So this, this meeting is now over and, uh, the link is either on your email or you can find it on the daily, on the, uh, or you can find it on the daily, on the, uh, weekly schedule. So, see you there, thanks.